Let me go ahead and call the budget workshop to order. It is 1 o'clock on Wednesday, August 19th. Before we get into citizen input, let me go ahead and just ask, do we have any agenda modifications? We're all on the same page?
No agenda modification, sir.
Okay, excellent. Let's go straight into citizen input. Mr. Treasurer Clerk, I'm going to go ahead and let you run the gamut as you do during the meetings. So I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I will point out that we did not receive any written comments by our deadline last night. So you did not have any of those distributed, nor have we received any during the day today. So we have, do have two citizens who have requested to speak and both have previously been connected, as Mr. Lane has advised us. So those two speakers will be Stanley Sims first, followed by Darwin Gamble. Mr. Sims will go first, and as we do on all of our meetings, citizens have three minutes for their remarks. I'll, we'll let Mr. Sims get started and I will try to give a heads up when he has about 30 seconds remaining.
Mr. Sims, thank you for joining us virtually. We appreciate it. When you're ready, as always, your name and address for the record, please, and the floor is yours.
My name is Stanley Sims. That's printed in the background. I'm at 32, I'm at 1320 Avondale Way. I'm very pleased for this opportunity. One of the reasons that I wanted to with this commission is because discussing the CARES Act, it is very important that you, I know that you're examining, that you're not doing any layoffs for citizens. But half years ago, you promised that we would ensure that all of our city employees were making a fair way. Mr. Robert Wiggum, a year and a half ago, did a presentation and cherry picked and left out what I have just found out in your last meeting of your budget workshop from our city manager, who makes $260,000 a minimum. So to not give him a raise won't hurt him, but to not give our city employees who are on the front line, i.e. like my black son, most city employees on the far end, on the low scale, are from our communities of color, our South Side. They live in Curtis Richardson's area where he built his house and he saw over there. That's where they live. So I'm asking this commission to not balance the budget on the back of poor, working city employees. Mr. Robert Wiggum said it was only 41 of them. I don't believe that, but I feel that we can give 41 citizen, city employees who are currently working through an epidemic, because epidemic hurts the poor more. When you give them a raise, they run to the grocery store. They run to get their car fixed. They run to buy their children food. When you give Mr. Reese a raise and he's making $260,000 a year, that's half of what the President of the United States made. When you give, when you don't give him his 3%, he don't run to the grocery store. He runs to the stock market. So I'm asking you in this care package, that show some care. Show some concern.
You're at about 2 and 1/2.
Thank you. I, it is important. This commission has showed compassion, showed compare with our nonprofits, with our small businessmen, and I applaud you for that, especially you, Mayor Pro Tem Diane Williams-Cox. And I'm asking you that you would extend your care and your grace to our current city employees, who our city manager calls seasoned employees. Seasoned employees catch COVID too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sims.
Our, our next speaker is Darwin Gamble. And as Mr. Sims, Mr. Gamble will have three minutes for remarks and I'll give a heads up at 2 and 1/2.
Mr. Gamble, thank you for joining us. We appreciate it. Like always, your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon. I'm Darwin Gamble at 1248 Halifax Court. And I think as you go through budget deliberations this time, you might want to consider things that some other cities in Florida are doing, especially with regard to law enforcement, one of your largest single expenses. For example, in St. Petersburg, they've decided not to hire 25 new police officers that they had planned to. Instead, they're shifting a lot of that money into what they call community assistance liaison officers. And I know that's not easy to remember, but these community assistance liaison officers are going to respond to 911 calls that deal with things like drug abuse, suicide prevention, truancy, complaints about homelessness, and other things. And those police union in St. Petersburg actually supports the proposal because it frees up their officers to deal with real crimes. Coincidentally, the division that's going to handle this new area is Assistant Chief Antonio Gilliam, who almost became police chief in Tallahassee. But that's what St. Petersburg is doing. The other thing you might want to consider, and I know it's very controversial, and it's been mentioned before, that many other cities in Florida contract out their law enforcement services to the county sheriff. I mean, it's dozens of cities from Destin to Deltona to Deerfield Beach. And means the cities that do that don't have their own police departments and they rely on the county sheriff for law enforcement services. And I know when this has been discussed here in the past, people associated with the C-word, consolidation. That's not really correct. It's not consolidation, it's outsourcing. Just like local governments hire private companies to collect solid waste, the cities hire their sheriffs to provide law enforcement services. And some of those cities are finding some substantial cost savings. If we did that here, we might even find some money for the salaries Mr. Sims is talking about. I know it's controversial, but it's something to consider because these are extraordinary times. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gamble. Certainly do appreciate you participating today. Mr. Clerk, do we have any other public comment?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, let's move into the discussion item with fiscal year 21 budget plan. I will go ahead and turn it over to City Manager and Robert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Good to have the citizens participate via this WebEx. This is our first venture into that and I'm glad it worked well. I know we are looking at even additional enhancements as the future is very uncertain in terms of how we meet. So I'm glad to see that has worked well and appreciate their comments. I will be reading my remarks because we have a full presentation by our budget experts. This is our last check-in before you get into your formal approval process of the budget, as you know, which happens in two meetings in September of every year. We added this to the calendar some months back. You added it to the calendar so that we had an opportunity to do our very best to estimate the impact of COVID on our government in terms of revenues and the necessary managed reductions that need to take place. So we're here today to make sure we do this final check-in. You gave us excellent guidance in July at your workshop with some very clear assumptions, one of which is that we hold the property tax rate the same. Often referred to as the millage rate, it's 4.1%. It is in fact the lowest property tax rate of the 25 largest cities in the state of Florida. But this budget assumes that. It is a balanced budget as required by state law. In combination between our operating and capital budget, $781 million, a little more than that. That's made up of $731 of operating, which is what we use day in, day out to support our community, as well as $150 million in capital. And so that's the long-term investment, but those dollars will be spent next year. So nearly $900 million will be spent in our community, serving our community and investing in that. I've characterized this as a hold the line budget because we know our resources are constrained due to COVID. It's obvious, it goes without saying. But we have talked extensively and you've given us good leadership as it relates to working very hard to make sure that we maintain our staff in full force, our full-time staff and OPS staff at the levels that they are this year into the future. We know many of our peer cities have been unable to do that. I feel good that we've been able to do that and I appreciate your direction and support. There are some items as it relates to compensation for employees. I will not go into the details of that because I know Robert has it in his presentation that I feel really good about because our budget office has worked diligently to make sure that we find ways to recognize our employees and especially recognize the period of time we're in, in the disproportionate impact. There are a number of other things included in the budget. Overall, I would characterize as manageable expense reductions related to capital and operating, things that for a year that we can avoid or delay or do a little less of, but it doesn't permanently alter the course of where we're headed. Investing in our community, investing in infrastructure. It maintains service levels as we have been accustomed to. There are a few items as it relates to fees. We're recommending some modest fee changes in growth management, planning, parks and rec, parking citations. And also delays, and you've talked about this numerous times, it delays the implementation of a fire service fee that was intended to be implemented in the fall. And we've talked about that and so this budget assumes that. So I think that's the, kind of the overview, doing my best not to get to the details, which I know Robert wants to share and engage in a discussion with the commission. But I think it is very similar to what you see in July. That's good. That means we didn't have any unexpected things that we just didn't anticipate in July. And we, our projections have settled. We feel relatively comfortable with those. We remain optimistic that in fiscal year '22, COVID is largely behind us and we return to a very strong budget position. And I think this budget, as recommended, puts you in that posture. We're very mindful of that. Can we do what we need to do? Can we support our employees? Can we maintain the workforce? Can we maintain service levels? So we're very strong as we emerge from the impacts of COVID. So I'm going to, at this point, I think I've kind of framed it well. I'm going to ask Robert Wiggum. He's our Director of Resource Management, as you know. He and his team have done an excellent job. They are on the WebEx with us. I'm going to turn it over to Robert and ask him to lead us through the presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Robert?
Thank you, City Manager and Mayor, City Commissioners and appointed officials, also our virtual audience. I appreciate you taking time to spend the afternoon with us and talk about the fiscal year '21 budget. Reese gave a really extensive overview, a really good overview. And so I'll, I'll avoid repeating, but I may repeat. If I could now, I'll share my, I'll not stop my video, but I'll share my screen with you so you can see a PowerPoint presentation. That'll allow us to walk through the present, the fiscal year '21 balanced budget. As Manager Goode mentioned, an $881 million budget. So it's a significant effort that we undergo today. And it's in advance of the formal budget hearings, public hearings that we'll have on September 9th and 23rd. Those formal budget hearings are very scripted. There's a certain amount of text that we have to read into the record and then opening and closing of public hearings. And so I really want to receive feedback at this meeting so that we have the opportunity to have open dialogue and discussion before we enter that scripted phase of the budget. With that, today we'll be talking about the path to a balanced budget and what it includes. On your left-hand side, you'll see what we have worked on for fiscal year '20 to accomplish a balanced budget in '20 that leads us to the ability to establish the budget for fiscal year '21. It's a commitment to no position cuts for full-time OPS or part-time employees if they stay on. We use a measured use of expenditure, use of expenditures to meet priorities. And then we're consistent with financing the government policy and the use of our reserves. And those reserves are for emergencies and they provide certainty for our clients and customers in a very uncertain time. No, no need to go back and make changes to what they pay for services as we deal with a pandemic or changing situations in the budget. Continuing that commitment in fiscal year '20, we also carry that into fiscal year '21. And on the right-hand side are the topics that we'll, we'll explore today. Again, as mentioned, $731 million in our operating budget, $150 million in our capital budget. We do want to talk about some personnel and revenue actions, a bonus, healthcare, pension, and leave buyout opportunities that we have. As Manager Goode mentioned, planning, growth management, recreation, fire, and some parking fee resolutions that we're going to implement as part of our typical budget process. And finally, reserves and CARES Act and how they interact with our budget this year and in the upcoming year. Particularly important is where the status of our deficiencies fund, where our enterprise fund reserves are, and then how we interweave that, the use of that with our federal and state reimbursement. Joining me today, as mentioned, I've got senior management analysts from Resource Management, Amy McLean, Matt Matherne, and Max Stout, who will speak about the capital budget, about fee resolutions, and reserves respectively. To jump right in, this is a challenging budget to balance. Fortunately, we have strong policies and responsible financial positions so that we can ensure a balanced budget for our 14 operating funds and our three grant funds totaling $731 million. The table to the right shows those 14 operating funds, the three funds that are our grant funds, community development, home investment, essential grant services, and add up to the $731 million budget that allows us to provide services to our citizens. I'll make a few observations about the most important funds. We've got a detailed overview of each of the, of the funds and a detailed pro forma with explanation of our assumptions in the packet that we provided. Most importantly is the general fund. It's where we, you know, encompass our roads, streets, sidewalks, public safety, parks, recreation, beautification, community engagement, and the community dispatch agency, to name just a few. As, as Reese mentioned, the general fund, supported by a 4.1 property tax rate. That totals $49.9 million in revenue in fiscal year '21. It's a modest increase. We saw also then in our, in our CRAs, an increase in their value and we share in that value there. That modest increase softens the impact of what we see happening with our sales tax, with our gas tax, with our state revenue sharing, which are, which we're estimating at about a 15% reduction in the first and second quarter of the year. Fortunately, we check in very often and we do plan on monitoring that very closely. And when things begin to turn around, react and respond to that with our, with our budget. As, as Reese mentioned, it results in a hold the line budget for recurring expenditures. And we have targeted one-time reductions in fleet and infrastructure investment. We're doing that across all 14 funds as they, as they need that assistance and then managing that, that impact with technology, with shifting resources across the government and believe that as a one-time action based on investment that we've made in the past on a regular basis, that we can forego that for, for fiscal year '21. I will point out that the fiscal year '21 budget for the general fund includes a transfer from reserves of $1.6 million. Our optimal expectation would be that as we lose revenues or as we increase expenditures in response to the pandemic, there may be federal and state funds that can offset that. If not, then we'll appropriately use those reserves and then talk about how the impact to the reserves can be mitigated over the, over the future years. The other funds, as we go down that list on the right-hand side, building inspection is in really good shape. We do expect to use a small amount of their reserves, a quarter million to $350,000 of their reserves. But that leaves them in a position with, with a fund balance that's very positive so that they can continue to approve permits, review building and development within the community and don't foresee any issues there. I'll leave fire services for a minute because we'll be talking about that from the rate resolution perspective. Our utilities, electric, gas, water, sewer, solid waste, stormwater are all in good shape based on policy. They have adequate reserves. They will be balancing that with the use of CARES Act where it's appropriate to be reimbursed for, for emergency protective measures. Again, we'll, we'll touch upon that in a later slide when we talk about the process that we go through for FEMA reimbursement. Each of those enterprise funds will follow their established rate studies. They also recognize an increase in the Consumer Price Index for increased costs for expenditures. They balance that out with any use of reserves if, if there's any downturn in sales or change in customer levels. Going down that list, the next area that is very familiar to everybody is aviation. We all know where they are in some respects. 30% downturn from the prior year through June of this last year. Airport operations down 16%. Fortunately, that's been recognized across the, you know, across the federal government and they do expect to be able to use about $4 million in funding from the CARES Act to balance their budget as they go through this experience and begin to see the signs of a return to normalcy. Another fund that's very impactful in the community is Star Metro, our transit services. We do expect some change in ridership over the next year. The FSU contract, I think, will, will change also with, with some of the decisions to go virtual with some classes. And then they're also impacted by state revenue sharing with gas tax monies that, that we obligate to Star Metro in order to balance their budget. Once again, fortunately, the Federal Transit Administration has identified that as a critical area. It has obligated money and Star Metro is going through the process of identifying their use of that money in fiscal year '20 with the expectation that it will be used also to balance the budget in fiscal year '21. The grant funds, you may notice that of the three that we list there, the state housing initiative program is, is not listed. That, there was a change in funding for this year, but we have seen supplemental funding that's come through and we brought those forward as they've, they've come to us from the state. So there's not a appropriation that we're showing for fiscal year '21. But we do have supplemental appropriations. In fact, one that we're going to ask you to approve for '20. And we do expect that with those appropriations that we've made in fiscal year '20, that it will allow us to continue the programs into 2000, into 2021. And I don't know disrespect for golf or donations or cemetery, but as, as operations, they're run very well, they're, they're minimal impact on the budget and whatever issues or needs they have, we'll work to resolve those. So in a nutshell, that, that's a, that's a $731 million budget. You know, the silver lining on top of our strong policies and our responsible financial position is that we've invested in infrastructure over a number of years. It enables us to adjust what we spend in fleet and road and sidewalk, maintenance and repair, and thus allows us to balance the budget. I think paired with our continuous reporting and analysis, we're ready for change. And it enables us to take these one-time actions. As those actions, as we see the results of those actions, we can increase or decrease the use of reserves or the use of those one-time actions. And our hope is that when things turn around in the first quarter of, of '21, that we would be able to bring that back to you for approval. And again, we'll be speaking very soon with you about the closeout for fiscal year '20, which will occur in October, November, and then bring back first quarter results in February of next year. You know, I talked about a lot of numbers, a lot of percentage changes, a lot of dollar values. I think what is most important with this budget, though, is that it, as we proceed through fiscal year '21, it continues our successful community engagement. We've stayed, we've stood up departments like diversity and inclusion, housing and community resilience. They operate programs along with their partners like COPS, CHSP, Temple. All of these things spearhead our strategic initiatives to increase affordable housing, improve environmental health and community wellness. We support public safety through the built environment and then we better prepare households to bounce back from crisis, just like the one we're going through and/or anything that, that comes at us as we proceed through hurricane season. You know, the community engagement, you know, includes efforts across the organization with partners and neighbors, drives our strategic priorities. And most importantly, it reduces the impact of poverty and improves quality of life across, across all our community, across all our residents. I, I'll apologize to Matt and Amy and Max. No ill will to them, but this is probably the most exciting portion of today's discussion. I'm very excited about it because we have talked repeatedly about the lack of recurring revenues and the result of that being no revenue growth to support raises. That's been a sobering discussion and understanding as we entered fiscal year '21. Well, you challenged us and you recognized over and over and credited the dedication of city staff. We know that employees have, you know, stood up and addressed what needed to be addressed as we've gone through the pandemic and as we've gone through storms and/or any social issues. And they've done it well. And we did at one point say that we're going to ensure that no employees go home with less in their pockets than last year. And if possible, you challenge us that in an uncertain budget, that we identify any options for more take-home pay. We believe we have some very good options and very strong options. We're recommending in fiscal year '21, a one-time bonus for employees who earn between $12 and $20 an hour. That one-time bonus is $1,000. We're also recommending in fiscal year '21, a reduction in what an employee pays for healthcare as part of their premium contribution. This would be a $602 benefit in, in a family plan, healthcare situation. We're also taking advantage of, in recommending a one-time option for leave buyback, 40 or 80 hours. That leave buyback, we are able to account for that in fiscal year '20 to not impact fiscal year '21. And it also reduces our approved leave liability. And so there's a mutual benefit that's there for immediate impact to a, you know, a staff member's pocketbook and also then allows us to remove some of the additional liability that's on the books for, for caring healthcare, I'm sorry, for caring leave forward. Tried to put this in terms in the, in the graphic that I've got shown there to provide some perspective for somebody that's making a pay rate of $12 or $20 an hour on the left-hand column, that's annual pay just at $25,000 and $41,000 with a bonus of $1,000, with a family healthcare amount of $602, with a leave buyback choice. And what I've shown there is an 80-hour leave buyback of $960 or leave buyback of 40 because there will be those who choose not to buy back leave. That results in an $800 or $960 immediate reimbursement to an employee. That in-pocket impact is about $2,500 of, in that pay range. You know, we typically have looked at establishing a 3% benchmark as what we recognize our employees for their hard work, for their productivity, for their constant improvement. What we're looking at here, balancing what we can afford in fiscal year '20, what we can afford in fiscal year '21 with, with not, without recurring revenues and impact to each employee of about 5.8% up to 10, 10.3%, which I think is very pleasing for us. It's just a side note, if we did implement a COLA, and one of the reasons we did not was that it would have about a $6 million impact for our full-time and OPS employees, we'd have to recommend as a recurring cost that would continue from fiscal year '21 onwards. to recommend as a recurring cost that would continue from fiscal year '21 onwards, that we might need to use reserve funds for that COLA. So in summary, I think we've got a strong, a strong set of policies. We've got well-established financial bulwark to work with in each of the funds. We've got good estimates for fiscal year '21 on what the impacts are of where our budget will be. And we believe that these provisions for general plan employees as presented are also feasible and reasonable and also recognize their hard work and dedication. Just a note on that, we are going through the collective bargaining process. If there's any ongoing cost impact, we'll bring that back and have the opportunity to talk about that in future budget amendments. As important as the operating budget is, equally important is the capital budget. I'd like to introduce Amy McLean to speak to the capital budget and its $150 million impact on the community.
Thank you, Robert. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. As Robert said, I'd like to discuss the capital improvement plan for fiscal year '21. I'll start by highlighting some of the projects underway that will make a significant impact to the community. And while I'm very thrilled with what we were able to accomplish with the personnel, I'm also really excited about these projects. And as I know you are, the Lake Bradford Road Fire Station will enhance response time for fire and other emergency services on the city's south side. Facilities for other public amenities such as a tempo resource center, a station for the community-oriented policing squad, as well as public gathering space, are also planned as part of the development of the Lake Bradford Road site. These amenities will complement the neighborhood improvement and placemaking efforts of citizen groups in Bond, Callan, Providence, and other neighborhoods. Phase three of FAMU Way is nearing completion. As you all know, this is a multi-year, multifaceted project that has had a huge impact. It has improved traffic flows, sparked redevelopment in the area, and provided an appropriate gateway area to FAMU. Fiscal year '21 marks the start of phase four, which will bring FAMU Way to Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, and that will finish by completing the vision of this significant infrastructure investment as phase four is completed. I think it's a good time to note here that both of these projects are examples of the capital investments being made in the city's south side. In prior years and in the proposed CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, about three-quarters of the projects are located in the south side of the city. This includes not only FAMU Way and the Lake Bradford Fire Station, but sidewalks, roadways, and utility infrastructure improvements. Other roadway improvements that we'll be making in other areas include railroad avenues, Xyla Street pedestrian and street safety improvements, and improvements at McClay Commerce Drive and McClay Boulevard. Moving to the next slide, another very exciting project, of course, is the senior center. The vision of this new center is to, as we do with the current center, enrich the lives of our seniors through social engagement, wellness and fitness programs, recreational activities, and lifelong learning programs. This will be a multipurpose space that will host meetings, games, conferences, workshops, concerts, and this is going to be a significant addition to our outreach and engagement of seniors in Tallahassee. Also, the Tallahassee Police Headquarters, another project that we're, that's very much on our minds. Progress is being made, including environmental assessment and remediation work at the Northwood Site, and that work is expected to be completed around the first of next year. Staff has recommended a three-phase process with an anticipated timeline to meet the objective in our strategic plan to complete construction and begin operations by 2024. Planning for the headquarters facility will be a citizen-intensive process, and this will need time to develop the site correctly and engage the community. Once the spatial and needs assessment, site planning, and conceptual building design are complete, cost estimates will be reviewed and, as needed, updated in the capital plan. The current budget appropriated included in the five-year plan for the project is $56.2 million. Moving on to our enterprise capital investments, these come from long-range master plans and includes $30.7 million for airport and $71.2 million for the city's six utilities. These are key capital investments that ensure the reliability of our essential services. So in the next slide, you'll see that we have a couple of items here to illustrate. The first pie chart on the left shows that for fiscal year '21, the breakdown of enterprise capital investment of $100 million. And you can see in the chart that it's, it shows the full total of 100 million, and it's broken down into the different utilities that will be making those investments. The chart on the right breaks down the general government portion of our, of the capital budget at $50.6 million for a total capital budget in fiscal year '21 of $150.6 million. These projects are funded from a variety of sources that include transfers from operating funds, RRI funds, and bonds. And for general government projects, we also have sales and gas taxes that help fund those as well. Capital planning starts with master plans that cover 10 to 20 years based on the service life of the asset, and these then inform the five-year planning that we do. Now, capital planning is also a fluid process where projects are continuously reviewed by departments and resource management staff to match cash needs with the timing of project milestones. By evaluating the timeline of each project, combined with prioritization and funding availability, adjustments are made as needed to ensure resources are maximized so that we can make the capital investments that support our priorities as defined in the city's strategic plan. One of these adjustments, you may notice, is that the fiscal year '21 capital plan has decreased since the five-year plan last year, and this is mainly due to just what we were talking about, which is looking at the timing and how the projects are moving. In this case, it was due to shifting some funds for large infrastructure projects such as Aviation's International Passenger Facilities and the Tallahassee Police Department Headquarters Construction Phase out to fiscal year '22. And those changes were based on the current status of planning and design and the schedules that are being reviewed to get these projects completed. Overall, the total for the five-year capital plan for all five years is $88.6 million. You receive some detailed information in your packet on the projects and the funding sources, so you have, you can refer to that at any time. But what's most exciting to me about the capital improvement plan is it's really what is building the city's future. We're literally building it, and with the projects that we have moving forward, it's going to be a very bright future. So now I'll turn it over to Senior Management Analyst Matt Matherne, who's going to speak to you a little bit about fee updates.
Thank you, Amy, and with all due respect to you and Robert and the excitement that is capital planning and personnel expense. If you don't have revenue and you don't have rates to support it all, this is where the action is. Citizens, mayor, commissioners, city manager, and appointed officials, as part of the annual proposed budget process each year, we research and include fee updates based on timelines and policy designed to make sure we are recovering revenue for the services that we provide and to do so in a timely, fair, and equitable manner. I'd like to take the next few minutes and present the fee updates we've included as part of the fiscal year '21 budget. These are a result of our consistent approach to fees that includes ensuring that all fees are fair and equitable, that we are recovering the full cost of providing services, and also ensuring that those who request, use, or benefit from a service pay for it. Upon adoption of these updates, the city's municipal cost comparison will be updated in fiscal year '21 so that we can continue to track our progress towards remaining one of the lowest-cost cities for residents and businesses in the comparison. As they do each year, these updates apply to a wide array of fees that represent the diverse services provided by the city of Tallahassee. The first updates, as you can see from the slide, apply to our planning and growth management fees that recover the city's cost to provide various development review services. The revisions in these two resolutions are based on a market review of similar-sized cities in Florida as well as Leon County. Additionally, these revisions will allow the city to collect notice and advertising expenses, which can vary widely as a pass-through cost. The second update referenced in the slide would revise some of our recreation fees according to the city's financing the government policy. This would be done through the application of CPI on recreation fees, the Consumer Price Index, which is currently at 1.5%. Also, staff is recommending that fees charged to local swim and recreation clubs be set to recover the cost of the use of the city's pools and other recreation assets. And to ensure that all of our citizens can participate, the policy of providing scholarships and reduced fees for children and families in need of assistance will remain in place. Third, from the slide, we are also presenting updates to the city's parking citations and leases. The citations have not been updated to keep pace with the metered rates and some parkers who are choosing to pay the fines instead. This has resulted in a lack of turnover of these spaces, which means less revenue for the city. More importantly, for city businesses, it has been a lack of turnover on these available parking spaces. These revised citations will result in increased parking revenue, better services to local businesses, and complement a variety of other program improvements made in the last year, such as the increased use of technology and a more proactive approach to customer service. Also, these changes would allow for the separate collection of sales tax, thus recovering that cost directly from the user of the service. Fiscal year '21 is also the year that an update to the fire fees is scheduled. This follows the city's consistent approach to updating fees and rates within our enterprise funds on a five-year basis that provides for rate stabilization and ensures a dedicated source of funding. Due to the impacts of COVID-19, however, the rate, the update would delay the rate change until fiscal year '22, which is detailed in the resolution and is based on the same approach and methodology as the current fees. Further, this includes the same approach to working with Leon County as in fiscal year '16 to ensure that rates can be collected countywide, and there's a coordination between both governments, between both governments and the administration of the program. Now I'll turn the presentation over to another member of the resource management team, Max Stout. Max is a management analyst in the Office of Resource Management. He has been with the city since 2009 and previously served as a senior aide to former Mayor John Marks. Max received a master's in public policy and a master's in public administration from Florida State University. In addition to serving as the budget analyst for the city's electric and gas utility, police department, and elected and appointed officials' offices, he manages the reimbursement process for over $50 million in disaster recovery funds. As such, he is the perfect person to now provide you with updates regarding the city's FEMA and CARES Act funding status and progress to date. Max?
Great, thank you, Matt. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. As Matt mentioned, I'd like to discuss the city's cost recovery efforts through FEMA and the CARES Act, the recommended use of reserves to support the fiscal year '21 budget, as well as some of the city's efforts to improve and expand our ability to attract eligible expenses for reimbursement. So first, I'd like to provide a very brief overview of the also very exciting world of FEMA public assistance. Since 2016, the city of Tallahassee has been impacted by hurricanes Hermine, Irma, and Michael, all three of which have resulted in reimbursement claims through FEMA's public assistance program of nearly $50 million. The FEMA Public Assistance Program provides aid in the wake of a major disaster to state and local governments to help communities in their recovery efforts. Once FEMA and the state approve a request for assistance, applicants then work with their FEMA representative to develop a damage inventory. This inventory is a detailed list that may include emergency work performed, damages to roads, facilities, and other infrastructure, and is the foundation for the project worksheets that will be developed and will eventually lead to obligation of funds. Normally, an emergency such as a hurricane will result in damages of various types, which FEMA groups into categories, which will include debris removal, emergency work, utility restoration, and so on. However, for COVID-19, eligible damages are limited to emergency protective measures only. These include costs such as overtime, non-budgeted staff time, and personal protective equipment. The city then submits information documentation so FEMA can make an eligibility determination for these costs. These documents may include contracts, invoices, labor records, among others, after which FEMA will obligate the funds, and the state is then responsible for dispersing the money to applicants based on their policies and procedures, which in Florida includes a 100% validation of all costs. It's also important to note that public assistance includes a cost-sharing element with 75% of eligible costs covered by FEMA, while the remaining 25% is split between the city and the state. As the city's current reimbursements go, we anticipate recovering an additional $25 million from prior storms, with over $6 million of those funds already obligated and under final review by the state for payment. Notably, $2.5 billion of these funds are due directly to the deficiencies. In addition to FEMA public assistance, the city is also eligible to receive funding through the CARES Act, which provides over $2 trillion in federal stimulus funds, including billions in grant opportunities for state and local governments for COVID-19 response and emergency relief. Specific benefits to the city include the Leon CARES Program, which is a $52 million in funding awarded to the county for local distribution with a sub-allocation of $5 million for the city of Tallahassee. One benefit this funding has versus traditional public assistance is there's no cost share associated with CARES. So this will be 100% of any eligible cost received by CARES. And furthermore, this can also be used to offset the city's share of the matching funds, which was that 12.5% earlier. The CARES Act also has provided direct grants of over $10 million in funding to the city from federal agencies, such as FDA, FAA, HUD, and of course, this would be for departments such as Star Metro, aviation, housing, and community resilience, respectively. So to account for issues such as the FEMA cost sharing, the timing of these reimbursement payments, and other unexpected costs, the city maintains appropriate reserve for its operating, including the deficiencies fund, which supports the general. The policy target for the deficiencies fund is $26.9 million, which is based on two months of operating expenses, and the current fund balance is $20.7 million estimated at fiscal year end, excluding ongoing hurricane and COVID-19 costs. The FY '21 budget recommends the use of $1.69 million in reserve funding to support the general fund until federal and state reimbursement is complete. So understanding the importance of maintaining reserves and then quickly restoring these reserves once used is why city staff has been focused on improving how we track and develop our reimbursement claims. While we may not be able to accelerate FEMA or the state's overall process, what we can do is ensure that the documentation we provide is as complete and accurate as possible, thus reducing any questions or delays for recovery. We found that as a full-service city, the challenge that we face is we have to balance the need for federal and state documentation requirements with the city's emergency response priorities. For example, during a storm, the electric utility is focused on restoring power, while the police department is focused on public safety, which, you know, range from directing traffic at intersections or responding to a true life and death situation. And managing FEMA-required documentation and tracking costs is not always their priority and more contribute. So with this in mind, staff has developed a cost recovery model in the Anaplan System, which has improved the city's ability to track costs, deliver completed reimbursement claims, while minimizing the impact to our department's existing procedures. Tallahassee's model has been very well-received, and it was featured as part of a national webinar. That's something that we're obviously very proud of. And one of the strengths of this model is it allows us to better track and consolidate data now rather than later. Gathering additional data during an event ensures that we're ready as soon as FEMA begins reviewing reimbursement claims and that the information is still fresh in everyone's mind. It is much easier to, you know, go to an employee and correct an activity log now than it will be six months or a year from now. This effort will also result in savings on administrative costs paid to our consultants by as much as 35%, and this is a savings that we expect to see as part of COVID-19 as well as any future emergencies. While this tracking model, no doubt, served the city well While this tracking model, no doubt, served the city well, staff is continuing to work with its disaster recovery consultants at ICF to identify additional process improvements for COVID-19 and, and any emergencies down the road. So with that said, I'd like to turn it over to Robert to discuss next steps.
Thank you, Max. Appreciate the overview, and I won't dispute how exciting capital or fees or FEMA reimbursement. Well, maybe I will dispute how exciting FEMA reimbursement is. You do, you do a fantastic job, Max, on being very patient and very comprehensive in dealing with what can be two and three layers of bureaucracy, and, and you've shown well, and that's why we wanted to give you the opportunity to speak of, of, of all your efforts and recognize your efforts. So thank you.
Robert, I just want to, I just want to say, I'm sitting on the edge of my seat for all of this.
I hope, I hope we are keeping you on the edge of the seat and it's not to run out of the building. We've come to the conclusion of our presentation. I'll just say that the fiscal year 21 budget is balanced. It's a combination of one-time action, recognition of the importance of our employees, paying a fair share of fees, and, and active partnerships with federal and state agencies. We are taking this opportunity, having an agenda item before you, to, to supplement an appropriation for state housing initiatives program. $508,000 was recognized to the city, and we'd like to obtain your approval to, to, to approve that, that obligation in fiscal year 20. But we'd also then accept feedback on the proposed fiscal year 21 budget and then affirm the process for the scheduled budget hearings in September. As I mentioned, much of that September 9th meeting, which will be advertised again for the public to participate through the trim notice that they received in the mail, but then also in the paper, in the, in the weeks preceding the, the hearing, will be a process where we open a, a public hearing for the mileage rate for the city and for the Downtown Improvement Authority. We'll open a public hearing and close that public hearing for comment from the public on the budget for the city and for the Downtown Improvement Authority. And then we'll also read into the record the resolutions that, that Matt, Matt walked through for some of the fee changes that we have in place for this coming fiscal year. With that, if there's any feedback or any questions, I'd be glad to entertain them. And we have a full complement of, of citywide staff that have lent themselves to, to where we are with this budget and can answer your questions also.
Thank you, Robert. Let me make sure that I understand, because in our agenda item, it was for discussion only, but summarize again the actions that you're looking for from this commission today?
Yes, we are asking for a, an approval of a supplemental appropriation for ship of $508,071, which will be added to the fiscal year 20 budget. We'll ask for any feedback that you want to provide on the fiscal year 21 budget, and then we'll ask that you confirm any, the, the process of, for September 9th or 23rd, or answer any questions that you have, that you may have.
Okay, thank you. First of all, let's go ahead and, and clear off, is there any discussion about the supplemental appropriation for the ship money, the housing money? Can we just go ahead and take a motion to clear that off the deck before we get into the discussion in regards to the budget, since that is for fiscal year 21?
Move to approve.
Okay. There's a motion on the table made by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson, specifically for the supplemental approval of the money for fiscal year 20. Robert, did I, did I phrase that appropriately?
Perfect, yes.
Excellent. Is there any discussion on the motion on the table? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Great, it passes unanimously. Thanks for letting me take care of that, colleagues, I appreciate it. So now, let's have a conversation about the fiscal year 21 budget. And what Robert is looking for at the end of this discussion is if there is anything above and beyond what's been presented that needs to be added in, we will provide them direction. Otherwise, we will confirm the process through a motion as well, with our next meeting being on September 9th. So let me go ahead and, and, and to make it easy, let's just go straight down the line. Everybody has an opportunity to speak. I will start with the Mayor Pro Tem and just go down from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to go straight, straight to the heart of the matter. You know, my, my concern is always for the city employees, especially those on the, on the front line. Wanted, I, I want us to go back, if we can, and maybe put that, that graph up, Robert, to look at those proposed benefits. I know that we've been accustomed to doing a 3% kind of across the board, but looking at where we are, and I don't know why I'm getting feedback, but looking, looking, looking at where we are currently, trying to, trying to find ways to balance the budget and not balance it on the back of the employees, as Mr. Simms said, I know is, is our, is what we're, we're aiming to do here. So if I understand it correctly, anyone making somewhere close to $25,000, $24,960, $960 would be eligible for a one-time $1,000 bonus in their, in their pocket. If they have a family healthcare plan, will cover the, the, make a larger contribution towards that, and also allow the opportunity to do some buyback or some leave that people have had because they've not been able to go and leave because we've been at homeworking. And so it would, it would, could net in, in, in their pockets over $2,000. So for the, for the, that, that line, we're talking about 10.3% impact to the positive for the employee. Is that correct?
That is, that is accurate, Commissioner, yes.
So in other words, that would be like a 10% raise as opposed to a 3% raise. And then likewise for the $41,600, same thing, and it would net with a larger, no, no, okay, it would net a 5.8% increase because of the, the pay being, being more. So what we're talking about is, what Mr. Sims was talking about, is those frontline employees that are exposed, they're being exposed and they're taking care of everybody. We're talking about that group of people and not the city manager at $260,000. I didn't even know what you made, Reese, I ain't even thought about that. Give me $20. We're looking at doing that for those individuals, not across the board. Is that correct?
That is accurate, Commissioner. I will say that the, the bonus is targeted to the pay rates of the $25,000 through the $41,000 paid employees. The family healthcare is a, a reduction in their premium, and it will accrue to anybody who has a family plan. We'll do something similar for a plus one and for those with a individual plan. The leave buyback will be a choice that all employees could entertain, but, but we wanted to show in these two pay ranges that the, the, the level of impact that it would have. You know, without the bonus, we'd be looking at, and again, I think what's important is that these are not non, these are not recurring expenditures at one time. So you, no, you've, you've stated it accurately, thank you.
As opposed to if we went with the, the usual 3%, this would be recurring, and it would cost us close to $6 million. And, and as I understand, we're, we're trying to, well, we have to balance our budget. And I also understand that we've spent quite a bit of money to provide support during this COVID period of time that we may not be able to recoup all of, all of that back. So we have to take all of that into consideration to, to balance our budget. Okay, so I, I just wanted to go through and, and make sure I was clearly understanding what we're trying to do for our frontline employees, because that, that is very important to me. Okay, thank you.
And Commissioner, this is Raul. Obviously, we're in collective bargaining negotiations with the fire department, with the fire union and the police union. So the leave buyback and the family healthcare are being, are currently being negotiated as part of those negotiations.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, just on point, I wanted to, again, emphasize the fact that in addition to monetarily what we're looking at doing for our employees, our commitment is to maintain our current staff of roughly 3,000 employees. So no one will be laid off or furloughed as a result of this budget. Robert, is that correct as well?
That is accurate, yes.
Okay.
No, no furloughs, no layoffs. We'll maintain a commitment to the current hired employees and for vacancies to fill those vacancies in areas where, where we need the work to continue and to get done.
Right. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think in light of, of where we are with this pandemic and the effect that it has had on our economy and certainly on our budget, I think the staff has done a magnificent job of balancing the budget, which we're required to do. At the same time that we're making a commitment to maintain our current staffing level, the level and quality of services that our citizens have come to expect, and to monetarily reward those who are on the front lines, who are providing those services on a day-to-day basis. And so I commend the city manager and staff for how you all have been able to balance not only the fiscal year remainder of fiscal year 20 budget, but to present to us a balanced budget for fiscal year 21. And I think that has happened largely because of decisions that were made in the past that now are proving to be farsighted in terms of our fiscal health and the fiscal strength of the city, the fact that we are able to be able to balance this budget without a tax increase, I want to emphasize that again as well, without laying off or furloughing any employees and providing those frontline, frontline workers with monetary bonuses in effect. So I, I think we've done a phenomenal job, and I'm looking forward to approving the budget when the time comes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Bryant?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let, let me say that commend staff, first of all, for an outstanding job, number one, on recognizing the importance of our employees, and especially those who are at the lower end of the pay scale, and to provide an opportunity for them to actually receive pay. I, I have studied, and this, this is really a very good package. So it has been confirmed. Commissioner Williams-Cox actually went through all of the details, so I won't go back to them. But excellent job. Thank you for a great job. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Matlow?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I expressed at the previous meeting, you know, I still have some pretty strong concerns about cutting or not providing COLA adjustments to our employees this year. It's my understanding that the county government has been able to figure it out despite our budget challenges. The state of Florida, who very rarely gives pay increases, has figured out how, how to give pay increases. So what, what my biggest concern is, when we're looking at this bonus structure, is, is that's just for this year. So an employee who works for us for a career over the next 10 or 20 years, not getting that pay adjustment, that's going to be $50,000 at the end of their career, less that they get paid, unless our intention is to double down and give a 6% increase when, when times are better. So I, I would just say, we, we have a lot of capital improvement plans on the table, we have a lot of other things going on. If we could just give another pass-through, if we need to delay a project because of these unprecedented times we're in, just to get over this hump, I think that's the route we should take. I don't think we should, you know, put this on the shoulders of, of our employees who are, who are frankly going through a pretty hard time right now. A lot of people are working from home, they're, they're still paying their parking garage fee even though they're not coming in to park, utility bills are increased because people are working from home. And I think, you know, at, at this juncture, we just need to get through this pandemic, but we shouldn't ask our employees to, to, to have such a share of that burden. As we see healthcare costs increase, we know, you know, that, that a lot of them will likely have less take-home pay than they did the year before. My second concern is the, what's being proposed only refers to $12 an hour or above. We've had this conversation at previous meetings that we do have employees who have worked part-time for us for more than a year that aren't seasonal employees, they're not part-time employees. You know, a lot of people, just because you work a part-time job doesn't mean that's not your main source of income. And I think if you're working 25, 30 hours a week and you're here long-term, you should be entitled to the same $12 an hour compensation, as well as, as well as these bonus structures. We talked about, you know, the short-lived jobs like the Tallahassee Futures Leader Academy, I think that's, you know, that's fair. So maybe we need to look at a structure, if you're here for more than three months, then you're automatically eligible for the $12 an hour. So the people who are with us long-term and really coming into work every day can share the same benefit. So those are my thoughts on, on that issue. The second issue, first off, thank you to the public speakers and, and this format, that was mentioned earlier, I think it's been great. This has worked out a lot better than previous meetings. I wanted to circle back to what was mentioned earlier about responding to nonviolent calls for people experiencing homelessness, a mental health crisis. We have kind of seen that conversation spiked around the country, and I just wanted to ask the, the city manager or the police chief, if, if we've given any consideration to how that may look in, in something like that could look in the city of Tallahassee, or do we know how many calls like that we get per year, any of that type of data?
Mr. Mayor, on, on point.
Commissioner, Mayor Pro Tem, and then we'll come to you, Mr. Manager, for comment.
Okay, I, I, I agree with what Commissioner Matlow said. This process has worked smoothly, and I want to thank Harold Lane and Technology for doing this, and thank you, Jim, for allowing me to push a little hard to make sure we get it done, and thank you, Reese, for, for making it happen. I too am glad that we had those, those speakers, and I would love to be able to talk about those suggestions if we can get through this budget piece and then come back. I, I, because I, I want to dig into that a little bit more, if Commissioner Matlow, if that's okay, that we can, can dig into it more to talk about what we, what's possible, what's not possible, what we can do, cannot do outside of these current, this current budget conversation that we're having, if that's okay. And I also wanted to point to the county is able to give pay raises because they use property taxes, and of course, we know the property taxes have been, the value of the property has increased, whereas we, we don't, we don't get, we don't get that, that property tax like that to, to be able to give raises. So that's why the county has been able to do that. So we, we're having to find our, our funding from somewhere else. And so we're talking about to the $206 million, and if I'm not mistaken, we've spent $12 million, and we've only got $5 million back from the CARES Act. So I'm, I'm, I'm just hoping that we'll compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges and can have this, this robust conversation outside of this current budget conversation today in this meeting.
Sure. Hold on, let me, let me get to the city manager real quick, just a brief comment, and then, I mean, Diane, we can do that definitely, when we get to the budget, come back and talk as well. But there's a question posed to the manager, let's go ahead and jump on it.
Well, just to keep the flow, Mr. Mayor, the police chief is joining us today on this WebEx, and actually, he is working on a plan. I think it would be entirely appropriate, portion of this budget discussion, because it, it is within the framework of his budget that, that he shares an update. He is preparing a full, comprehensive update for the commission the first week in September, but I certainly know that he could speak to that if you want to wait to conclude the budget discussion, that certainly will follow your direction on that. But if I could, if I could just make sure we clarified, Commissioner Matlow, you indicated that healthcare premiums would go up, and actually, I say this only because that tends to be one of the greatest pressure points for our employees and really everybody that has healthcare insurance, is these go up. In the proposed budget, all healthcare premiums by the employee would go down. If you have family coverage, which is the most often subscribed to, it would go down $600 a year, employee plus one, it'd be $500 reduction a year, and then individuals less than that. But so what that does- a year. And then individuals less than that. But so what that does is everybody across the board of the entire workforce, their paychecks go up. So, you know, it's not, it's a positive impact, which I don't know in my entire career I've ever seen. So I just wanted to, I point that out because it's often discussed. I couldn't agree more that healthcare costs go up. And Raul, and I'm going to give Raul the credit, by the way, he deserves all the credit. He's been after CHP to make sure that we get the best benefit we can. And so it's kind of worked out well. And so that's the recommendation, that healthcare costs go down for our employees.
Mr. Mayor, on point as well. I respect Commissioner Matlow's comments, but what I would remind him and anyone else who's listening, the state of Florida hasn't given across-the-board pay raises to state employees that I know of, but once in the last 12 to 15 years. So to compare what we're doing to what the state has figured out, they should have figured out a long time ago, even when I was in the legislature, that our state employees needed annual raises. I just don't think that's a fair comparison in terms of where we are as a city. But I certainly respect his comments, but I just wanted to put that on the record as well.
Commissioner Malo, we're back to you. You have the floor, sir, for more comments on the budget.
Sure. And that's completely fair, Commissioner Richardson. You know, we have, the city has steadily given, you know, that increase, and the state has not, you know, I'd much rather work for the city than the state any day of the week, any year of my life, right? But I appreciate that. I mean, so I guess my overall point is like, are there things that we can delay that aren't employees' wages, that we can dig deep and really find how to get better, especially even for those people under $12 an hour? Commissioner Williams-Cox, yeah, I appreciate that. Happy to not have that part of the conversation in the middle of the budget talk, if we want to save that until the end. I just wanted to, we kind of talked about it in the past, and the public speaker brought it up, so I just wanted to kind of get an update on it. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. That concludes your comments, Commissioner Matlow. Excellent. Okay, I'm going to provide a couple of comments as well. Then what I'll do is, just for procedure, since we do not have additional direction at this point, Commissioner Williams-Cox, Mayor Pro Tim, I'm just going to come to you for a motion simply ratifying the process, our schedule of meetings as it's been presented. I believe, Robert, correct me if I'm wrong, but that will conclude the formal direction that you would need. At that point, then we can come back. Chief Revel, you are on notice. We're looking for, seeing how you're going to be bringing it back. We'll go to you first, Mr. City Manager, and then Chief Revel can provide a quick 30,000-foot briefing on what he is bringing back to us as well. But I too am very interested in knowing some of the creative mechanisms that we're going to be bringing for law enforcement. Chief, you and I have talked about expanding and building upon the civilian corps with mental health experts, areas where we don't need sworn law enforcement officers responding, non-fatal, non-injury traffic calls, and how we can truly evolve. I'd also like to throw in that one of the premier programs across the country is Eugene, Oregon. And I think it'd be worth looking at their program as well. But Chief, we'll come back to you and the city manager in a second. I too am very pleased with the package during these difficult times that we've put together for those employees that are going to be hit the hardest. Like Commissioner Matlow, I would love to be able to give a COLA every year and recognize the importance of that to a recurring standpoint. However, this is an extraordinary year, and I want to compliment staff for putting together the package that we are able to do. It is going to have a tremendous impact, again, on those that are hit the hardest, that are part of the city of Tallahassee family. I know you all think creatively, and job well done. To get into some of the specifics here, first of all, fire services fee, I just want to make sure, you know, what we are being, what we are proposing, a two-year extension of the current agreement. Have we heard anything formally or informally from the county that we can share about their thoughts? Are they going to be there with us? Is this going to be a curveball in the 11th hour, coming in, you know, to approve a budget at the end of September? Or are we both kind of on the same track, Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, we've coordinated with the county. Actually, I'd like Robert Wigan to address it, too. He and Matt Matherne have been in communication. The first decision point was to delay the implementation fee a year. You'll recall that discussion. So no arguments there by the county, and so they're fully aware of this. But Robert, can you add a little more to that?
Sure. Thank you, City Manager. Mayor, Commissioner's staff has been in close contact with Leon County staff. Executive-level management level have also talked about this, where we are with the fire services fee. We were prepared to move forward with changes to the fee until presented with COVID, and everybody was in agreement on how to move forward. As Reese mentioned, I believe it was the June 14 workshop, Matt can correct me if I'm wrong.
July 14.
I'm sorry, July 14. The county did discuss the hybrid approach of not putting in a new fee schedule for fiscal year 21 and waiting until fiscal year 22. At that time, with this resolution, we'll be ready to move forward, and we'll continue to work closely with the county. They have often used a unique approach in how they participate, a combination of tax dollars, a combination of fees, a combination of reserves. We want to afford them that capacity as we move forward into fiscal year 22. But we have not ever not paid for fire services fees from working together. And if there's any other detailed questions, Matt can answer those about the interlocal agreement and how we arrive at a point where we both sign off on that.
Excellent, Robert. Thank you. I appreciate that. My final question, Max, you did a great job presenting. Certainly do appreciate it. I have to tell you that obviously, nothing that you or the city has done, it brings me great concern to know that we have over $25 million worth of outstanding reimbursements from the state dating back to Hurricane Hermine, Irma, and Michael. Is there anything that we can do, or that I can do as mayor to help you, help the state expedite? Where exactly are we in this process? And Robert, okay, I see you raising your hand. The next question is, obviously, we are in storm season. I believe there are three active storm events of some type out in the Atlantic that are forming way off the African coast as we speak. It just rings the bell. Do you have any, Mr. Manager, I should say, serious financial concerns regarding our ability to respond with $25 million still outstanding and female reimbursements through the state right now during this hurricane season? Are we properly prepared?
Mr. Mayor, first, thank you for that question. It's certainly an appropriate question. At the conclusion of this meeting, I'm going to send you an email about the status of the storms in the Atlantic, and I can tell you that one may threaten us. Time will tell. So we are under constant threat, at least one of the three, constant threat of storms, and you know that. Financially, we're very careful with our reserves at the moment. You can see that in the proposed budget. That's, in fact, how we have funded the response to the past storms and, in fact, COVID now. We are prepared. We have adequate reserve at the moment. I will tell you that our capacity to handle additional years of storms and emergencies, though, gets very thin after a while. I am not alarmed at the moment, but another Hurricane Michael will be very challenging financially. So I know I haven't answered your question perfectly directly, but I'm not concerned. We should be careful in how we spend our reserves and maintain them.
So I guess my point is this, kind of bringing the conversation all back in, making sure that the community is taken care of, especially during a storm event. When we have conversations about the cost of living increase, which would require us to dip into our reserves to the tune of about, what, $6 million, $6.5 million? And although we would love to be able to do so, lacking the reimbursement from the state of $25 million dating back three hurricanes puts that much emphasis on making sure that we have healthy reserves to be able to make it through this storm season as well.
Good summary, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I want to thank everybody on the team. You all have done a phenomenal job during one of the most difficult budget seasons that I have ever experienced in 13 years of public office. And I know a lot of governments across the state and across the country are not doing as well as we are with their planning. And y'all have put together an amazing balanced budget. It may change moving forward, the next couple of meetings. We understand that. But for the update today, thank you very much. So again, I'm going to come back to the Mayor Pro Tim, who makes a motion just to ratify the process as it was presented schedule-wise, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. Any further comment on the motion on the table? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Excellent. So, Robert, I believe that concludes all of the necessary action that you have requested from the City Commission regarding the budget workshop today. Before we adjourn, Mr. Manager, let me come back to you and Chief Revel on that specific item that was addressed by Commissioner Matlow and the Mayor Pro Tim.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I appreciate the question. This is an excellent opportunity to at least give a kind of a sneak peek into stuff that you may all recall, that Chief Revel at the beginning of the year talked about community service officers. I believe that's the title, chief. But it would be non-sworn members of the law enforcement TPD to address certain calls. And I know he and his team are working on that actively. And we were planning to give you an update in September. And the reason I wanted to preface this before the chief talked, and I know he will do this, we can't talk enough about our Tempo program. Our Tempo program is targeting our disconnected youth, exactly of the age group that is a good feeder into a program like a community service officer that might not otherwise be attracted to law enforcement or otherwise qualify. And I can tell you that Dr. Thomas and Chief Revel are working hand in glove right now, today, as we speak, to create that pipeline to a new level of workforce that we've not had before. So I wanted to say that. I knew chief would say that. But this is exactly how we leverage the benefit of the city of Tallahassee and its entire workforce and the programs that we have in place to make sure. We're trying to help our community in every way. And we know probably the most critical piece is engaging our disconnected youth and members of our community that otherwise would not have that stair step up. So I wanted to say that. I want to acknowledge Deputy City Manager Cynthia Barber. You know, I'm doing the talking at the moment. Let me tell you, she's got the energy. So, Mr. Mayor, I feel like this is almost like a softball. I'd really like to talk about this, and we wanted to find an opportunity. We were scheduling it for September. But with that, let me just ask the chief to put a little more detail on what we're talking about.
Thank you, Manager. Commissioner, good to see you guys. Yeah, absolutely. We have been moving since January on the community service technicians, is actually what we're calling them. We've hired eight, two of which are Tempo graduates. And I'm very proud to tell you that my people have come to me and said, on more than one occasion, that the top performer of all eight that we have hired, including a 25-year veteran from the Miami Police Department, our top performer in this application process has been one of the young men from the Tempo program. They are adamant that by and far, he is the best applicant that we have in that entire group. And it's a good group. So, you know, that's kudos to Dr. Thomas and the Tempo program. And I cannot tell you just how excited we are about Tempo's involvement in that. Now, as far as the community service technicians go, it is exactly what we've been talking about. And it goes to some of the comments from one of the gentlemen earlier. And again, we've been doing this since January. This is in place. The vehicles are ordered. You know, we've got all of this in place, and they will be coming online very soon, where we will have civilian members that will handle all non-priority calls. They will take anything where a suspect's not on scene, anything where there's no danger. And we hope to increase that by eight more community service technicians next year. So we would have as many as 16 next year. And again, including many of those positions for Tempo graduates. So we are very excited about that. We also have a program where we are using our community liaison officers in much the same sense of developing relationships with PATH and with others that we, you know, we have and expanding relationships so that some of these other groups that are out there and already performing in our own community, we can partner with them and get them to scenes for baker acts and things like that, you know, before we go. They may still need us there. They may still need us to stand by, especially when we begin the development of these. But these are programs that have been in place. They've been slowed down, obviously, by COVID, but we've been working on them, you know, since January. And many of those, we are starting to roll out now that, you know, COVID is, at least at a point where we're moving some other areas forward as well, schools, other things. So we're excited about it. We are working in every opportunity we can. We're leveraging technology with our cop logic and traffic crashes to get a lot of those online and free up time for the officers to do community service, you know, that we've been talking about, and maximize our resources. So small portion of what we're putting together, but I'm very much looking forward to sharing with you all in September, all of the accomplishments which we've been able to put together and accomplish, you know, in the short eight months.
Excellent. And I know y'all might have some questions for chief, too. Let me start off by saying, chief, I cannot stress enough, and we've done this in private conversations, you and me, that one of the components to your success of this new department will be a mental health component. And while I recognize that Tempo's an incredible feeder program into this, there are instances and a desperate need in our community to also have trained mental health professionals that can help in certain situations with certain calls. And again, I encourage you to check out City of Sarasota, has a great program specifically with mental health officers. Eugene, Oregon, has got a great program with with mental health officers. And I'm sure there's others across the country that we could take a look at while we're developing our own. But, you know, when we're dealing with those that are experiencing homelessness in our community, when we're dealing with just the pressures of COVID-19 and stay-at-home orders, I think it's really important for us to have those contractual relationships, but also to have those trained mental health professionals as part of the team, as a critical component to success.
Yes, sir. We have looked at, I have looked at those programs, as you suggested. We've read through all those, and we are working with the local group that has, we have a group that has something in place now, and we are working with them to kind of expand it. The problem right now is the ability to respond when we need them to respond and respond in all those type situations. So we're looking to expand that. But you're absolutely right, and we are currently working on that.
Chief, looking forward to the full presentation coming up in September. Madam Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, thank you for sharing it. Two quick points. One, I agree with the mayor about that mental health piece, but it's going to be very important that when we look at that mental health piece, we've got to have African-Americans, Latinos. We've got to have culturally-based mental health professionals so that they can come into situations and help de-escalate, perhaps. I know with, when there's an accident, you all, the police department has a rotation of tow truck drivers who come and bring the cars. We need a rotation of mental health professionals on hand so that once that community technician gets out there and realizes what's going on, they can call for, make that connection right there so that mental health is provided as soon as possible. So I think that that's great, but we've got to make sure that we compare, you know, we pair up people with folks who can be effective with them. And I'll just tell you that, and you already know this, but in the minority community, it is hard for us to receive mental help from people who don't know anything about how we live and the challenges that we have. And so, and it's hard to explain it to people. You've got to walk them out in these shoes to understand it. So we need mental health professionals who understand it and can bring that to the table so that we can have great success. And the other thing is, I'm glad that you shared that with us today. I think that one of the biggest problems that with the city of Tallahassee is you do a lot of work. We do a lot of work, but we don't tell anybody. We've got to do a better job of telling folks what we're doing, the services that are available, so that people won't come ask questions about it because they already be able to know about it, or we'll be able to point them to where they can get more information about it. So we've got to talk more about what it is that we do. That was one of the reasons why I pulled together- That was one of the reasons why I pulled together, asked all of you for the accomplishments from each of your departments, so that we could let people know what you've been doing for this past three quarters, that you haven't been sitting around twiddling your thumbs. Today is an example of the work that has been going on while COVID has been going on. It's an example of what people may be at home, but they're working on these things. And so we, we've got to let people know what we're doing because if they don't see it, they assume it's not happening. And so we got to be real careful of that. I saw today on Facebook that we have the new sign downtown for the Dartmouth Johnson Park. I didn't know that, but I'm glad, I'm glad that we, that it's there, and I'm glad that, you know, someone posted it. And maybe, maybe I got an email and I missed it, but we've got to let people know what we are doing. So that's what I say, and I know you're doing, you all are doing a better job of that, chief. You've put some information out there, but we've got to keep the, keep the communication and the conversation going so people know what we're doing. That's, that's, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, chief, for your work.
Let me get real quick, Commissioner Malo, since you're the one that originally brought it up, let me, let me turn it over to you in fairness, and then we're just going to go down Commissioner Richardson and Commissioner Bryant.
Sure, thank you, and I thank you for the update, chief. I strongly agree with the comments, Commissioner Williams Cox, and the mayor dismissed that, you know, when you were speaking, that was one of the things that popped up in my, my mind when we're dealing with vulnerable populations, homeless, people with mental health issues, just to make sure we have the right people and the right training, because we all know those are sensitive situations that can go right or go wrong, depending on how they're handled and how people are trained. I'm not sure what all you plan to bring back in September, but I think it would be helpful for us to just kind of have some raw data of how many calls you respond to in a year dealing with the homeless, how many calls you respond to dealing with the mental health crisis, how many arrests result from a mental health crisis. And any of that data, I think, would be just extremely helpful in us, getting a sense of, you know, what's really going on in the community and what may not really need that law enforcement response or need some sort of alternative response and just help us wrap our head around it. So I really appreciate the update, I really like the comments so far, and look forward to the next meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the question I had for the chief, and by the way, chief, I, I want to compliment you on, on, on many of the innovations that you're including in the Tallahassee Police Department. Of course, this program being one of them in partnership, especially with Tempo, and using those graduates from that program and putting them back into the community to provide those services. The question that I had is, I know we've talked about the fact that you are about 30 officers short of what you need to fully complement the police force. With the addition of these community resource officers or liaisons that you're talking about, does that obviate then the need for additional officers? Or would they supplement still the officers that are needed?
Right. They supplement, we converted some of the positions for other things, like one of the things I'm most excited about, and speak to your issue, Mayor Pro Tem, or your comment, you know, and again, I don't want to give out all the presents that I'm going to do in September, but we are very excited about hiring a digital media manager, communications specialist, and we've done that, and she'll be starting in September. Very excited about that because she's going to help with that messaging and with that branding and exactly what you were saying. So again, that's something we've been working on, we've gotten her hired now, she will be here. I don't mind telling you that it's Alicia Turner, who was a former anchor, you know, here in town and went off to North Carolina, but we've enticed her back. So very excited about having her and having her do exactly what you're talking about. You know, the, I just completely lost my train of thought. Tell me again.
We were talking about the need for the additional officers.
Thank you. Yes, sir. We, so they, the community service technicians will benefit the officers, and it'll free them up for some of that, and it'll take the place of those officers. And we still will need, again, you know, if you look at different studies, FBI studies and statistics, we are still far below where we should be for call volume and to do community policing the way it's supposed to be done. You know, so, you know, I have repeated many times publicly, and I thank you all very much for the support of knowing that if we get to the point where we, where we can fill those positions, and, you know, applicants are an issue right now, and I thank you very much for the support with the recruiting dollars that, you know, we're going to be able to use and hopefully increase that. But with that, you know, the, in this time that we're in, applications are down, and so we're, you know, we're working hard through those. But I know and I have the assurance from you all, and again, I thank you for that, that if and when we can get those positions filled and, you know, we get close to that, then we will look at more officers after that. And then again, we may get to that point and decide, you know, we're going to, with the partnerships that we've developed with mental health and with Tempo and with other things, that, you know, we may want to do some different things at that point. But, you know, I know that you have all been completely supportive, both city manager and deputy city manager have been incredibly supportive, and I know, and our officers know that, you know, if and when we get to that point, you know, that that's not an issue, we will move forward.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Bryant.
Yes, let me just follow up with one thing, and I think I brought this up before, especially as it relates to mental health and any of the other specialties that, to the degree that we can, at least explore collaborations with entities that already do, wouldn't be as rich as we do. We probably could get some agreements that would allow people from various mental health clinics that provide services to provide us with hours of service, especially specific to communities that would, in fact, embrace people that look like them and understand their issues without actually hiring someone, well, I want to say without, we need the people we need to hire, but I'm sure that the seven, or how many ever you state it, will not be enough. So collaborations become extremely important, and I will challenge you to continue to look for opportunities for collaboration. But good job, we're in the right direction.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, chief, for the quick update. Yes, Mr. Manager.
You know, on point to what Commissioner Bryant's saying, I just wanted to confirm that at your last meeting, you asked staff to develop some recommendations related to mental health and things we can do. Ojatayau is working on that. Again, this seems like a similar theme. Our next business meetings in September, that is the scheduled date to bring that to you. I just wanted to confirm that, that it is, you can tell, staff has been busily working over the summer, and I think we've got a lot of good work to bring to you in September. But I just wanted to confirm that it is coming back to you.
I am very glad to hear that. I think you're hearing once again the priority of importance that mental health issues have in this community to this commission. So we're glad to hear that everything's going to be coming back to September for consideration. Commissioner Richardson, did you have one more thing? Did I see your hands?
I was down.
Okay, sounds good. All right. Seeing nothing else to come before the commission today during the workshop. Robert, have we provided good guidance on what you needed today from us? Excellent. Mr. Manager, thank you very much. Seeing no further business coming before the commission, I call the workshop adjourned. See everybody, well, actually, I guess we have our next meeting tomorrow. Mr. Manager, we'll see you then.